President Viescas, we are recording and the floor is yours.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Allen. I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education to order. Due to the executive orders issued by Governor Newsom due to the COVID-19 outbreak, tonight's meeting is being conducted via the Zoom platform and is also being streamed to YouTube. The meeting is being audio and video recorded and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district website. We thank you for joining us and for your patience as we use this format in an effort to maximize access and participation during this time of physical distancing and other restrictions. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome. My name is Paula Viescas and I am the board president. Joining me tonight is Dr. Michael McKibben, Board Vice President, Ms. Zima Creason, Board Clerk, and Ms. Pam Costa and Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Members. Superintendent Kern and other staff members are also in attendance. Before we begin, I'd like to review the two methods that are available to submit public comments for tonight's meeting. The first option is to submit a comment online using the comment form located on the district website at www.sanjuan.edu/BoardMeeting. Again, that's www.sanjuan.edu/BoardMeeting. If you wish to submit a public comment on more than one agenda item, please submit a separate form for each item on which you are commenting. Comments received by 6:00 PM today have already been shared with all board members. Comments received after 6:00 PM tonight, including those submitted during the meeting, may be read during the meeting depending on time restriction. Comments may only be submitted on an agenda item up until the time the agenda item has been discussed. The second option is on the Zoom platform where you may use the Raise Your Hand function. When you are called on, you may share a comment via audio during the meeting. Please note that all public comments are subject to a two-minute limit or approximately 1,500 characters. With that, we are at Item B, Approval of the Minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes at this time? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes for September 8?
It's been moved.
Let's get it.
It's been moved by Mr. Hernandez and seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. We are now at... Still unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. We are at Item C1, High School Student Council Reports. Tonight, we will hear from student representatives from San Juan High School and Rio Americano High School. To begin, I would like to welcome Valerie Toledo Galan from San Juan. Valerie, please begin when you are ready.
Thank you, President Velazquez, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. I am Valerie Toledo Galan from San Juan High School. Here at San Juan, we try to make the best out of situations like this. Long-distance learning is a new and difficult experience our students are trying to adapt to. I have had conversations with my fellow peers and teachers about their experiences and feelings about our new way of learning. Not only is it problematic for students, but also for teachers. It wasn't easy for our school community to settle down, but we have a well-organized system in each one of our classes in order to ensure social distancing is fit. Personally, as a senior, this event honestly has been a really letdown for my last year of high school. I frowned upon the events and activities I will not be experiencing this year. Although, I will say that our students are really looking forward to having sports this year, which is a conversation that is still in the air due to social distancing. I am a big part of sports program due to almost playing every sport, which makes me extremely excited for all those fun senior nights. And even though we are not physically our school, our student government class has been planning activities for us to still be able to participate and be part of our school community. For example, last week, they planned a spirit week. This event was very fun for our students. We got to dress up as superheroes one day and dress as if we were going to reach on another. It was an amazing way to bring some school spirit to our new year together. This Wednesday, our ASB has planned an ice cream drive-in from 11:30 to 1:30 PM, and all the students are welcome. Overall, I am very proud to say our school admin has done everything in their power in order to maintain our school community running smoothly through these difficult times. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Valerie, for your report. We're excited to have you. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues for any questions. We'll begin with Mr. Hernandez.
No questions. Thank you for the report.
Ms. Costa.
I would also like to thank you for the report. I have no questions.
Ms. Creason.
Just wanted to thank you for the report and acknowledge I hear your pain. You know, I heard you, and I'm really sorry. This isn't the year that you deserve. None of the kids deserve, and especially in your senior year, I know how painful that must be. So I just want to acknowledge and say I'm really sorry. It isn't what you deserve.
Dr. McKibben.
Valerie, I had two things. The ice cream drive-through, will you say what the... Where the times for that were again, please?
Yes, I will.
You're on mute, Valerie.
I'm so sorry. Let me just double-check the times are correct.
We can also have it sent over in a separate communication. We can try and track that down if you don't have it on hand, but also happy to take a pause if you do.
Okay, it's at 11:30 to 1:30 PM.
On which day?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
Yes.
And Valerie, you said you participate in several sports. What sports are those?
So I do volleyball, track, basketball, softball, and this year cheer.
Wow, okay. Thank you. Which is your favorite?
I could go volleyball. I've been playing it since I'm in seventh grade.
Okay, very good.
Very good, and thank you, Valerie, very much for the report. And also just for your very direct sentiment. I mean, a large part of why we have these student reports is really, we want to hear directly from you, and I also just want to say, you know, we definitely feel how... Have an idea of how hard this must be as a senior class, hoping, you know, our... Everything remains kind of up in the air. Conditions continue to change, but sending a lot of empathy to the class of 2021, and hopefully, we can get a little bit creative in the spring with either some ideas and some other options. So thank you very much for joining us. It was really great to have you. Next up, we will hear from Tessa Luthborough from Rio Americano. Tessa, please begin when you are ready.
Hi, I'm Tessa Luthborough, and I'm the ASB Treasurer at Rio Americano High School. Thank you for inviting me to speak with you. Today, I'll be expressing some of the positive experiences that my fellow students and I have had, as well as some of the challenges we've been facing through distance learning. First off, I'd like to say that the schedule that we've set up now feels significantly more organized than we first went to online learning in the spring. Also, the longer class time at an hour and a half allows for students to work on homework within the scheduled school day, which I know a lot of students appreciate. Also, the nine o'clock start time allows for a more productive workday as we have more sleep, so we're more motivated to keep working. Some challenges that we're facing is that many students feel their time is not respected as they feel as though they're working for the time they wake up to the time they go to sleep, which isn't very different from what we were doing before. But I think the lack of transition from one place where you're learning like school back to home does create a long workday for us, and without that break, it is difficult. Also, some students feel as though their Zooms were pointless as teachers are just reviewing old assignments or filling up time with conversation, and we prefer if teachers were more intentional with their time and only post Zooms for actual teaching or instruction, so giving them the ability to either send an email for the day just reviewing, or something through Google Classroom. Also, students had issues with Wednesdays and the way that that is scheduled. They feel that it's extremely rushed and not necessary. Some suggestions that students had was doing something similar to when you have an open six period. You're able to just answer a question on Google Classroom to show that you were there, and that might be better instead of Zooms. And in place of the Wednesday classes, we could have open office hours for optional instruction, and that way, students will get that one-on-one instruction that we're missing right now. On a more positive note, we've been trying to create events so students feel connected to the school. One of these is Club Rush that we just started this week. We created a website so students can see all the clubs and sign up through that. We also had monthly speakers. We had Kevin Bracy, a motivational speaker, come, and we've been thinking about opening those Zooms up to other schools throughout the district. We also have a virtual bulletin and rallies. Our social commissioners make weekly updates about the school and other things that are happening, including other events. And the rallies are really fun to watch as well, just little videos in the gym. We also had the student and teacher recognition, so students are able to nominate their classmates and other teachers, and then Student Gov chooses three students and two teachers to recognize each month. And that is all. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Tessa, for your report. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa for any questions. We will begin with Mr. Hernandez.
No questions again, but thank you very much for your report.
Ms. Costa.
Tessa, with the student-staff recognition, what types of things are people being nominated for?
We've nominated students for, like, some kids were helping out the teachers with like learning how to work Zoom and things like that, so they were taking time out of their day to help them with that. And then also with teachers, a lot of teachers have been taking time out of their day to work one-on-one with students, check in on their mental health, and just making them feel really comfortable doing online learning. So that's kind of the things that we're looking for, just students that are maybe doing things in the community as well with like all the protests and things like that, just helping out the community.
That's really encouraging. Thank you so much.
Ms. Creason.
Thanks for the report, and just want to thank you for sharing the positives and the challenges. It really is incredibly helpful, and I just wanted to ask a little bit more about the, you know, the day being so long. I experienced that too, but I want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly your experience. I work from home, and it, you know, because I don't leave an office, it just feels like I keep working because I choose to. So I'm wondering, is that it or is the workload greater in this moment?
Yeah, so I think the first thing you said, where we're just continuously working, is probably it. But the students that I talked to in our Student Gov group, they went back and forth talking about whether it was more homework or less homework. So I think that's per class, pretty much, but I do feel like it does, you just continue working the whole day like you were saying. So, yeah.
Yep, I know that feeling, and it's definitely challenging. And just wanted to also say, I'm loving, the last week, or two weeks ago, another school said that they were continuing with Club Rush, so I'm really excited to hear that you all are doing that, because that's a great way to, you know, we start saying social distancing. It's not social distancing, it's physical distancing, and that's a way to, you know, keep the socialization going. So I'm really excited to hear that, and I think that that's a great idea and very kind of you to consider opening up your Zooms, your... I forgot what they are. I lost my note, but you're going to, you're doing something cool. You're going to open it up to other schools, and I think that's very kind. So thank you for that thought.
Dr. McKibben.
Tessa, I wanted to pick up on what Ms. Creason was talking about. In terms of the, you mentioned Kevin Bracy and others. Is... When did that happen? Was it a regular time each week? Or which days did you do that sort of thing, and what were some of the other people that have agreed to do that kind of activity?
Um, we have only had one, so it was only Kevin Bracy so far, but we're planning on doing it monthly. I believe we had one September 11th, I think, was the date that we had that, and we typically have it during lunch.
During lunch, okay.
Yeah, we had a big turnout, so we had other schools contacting us to open it up, so we thought that that would be a good idea, too.
Sounds like a great idea. Thanks.
Thank you, Tessa, for your report, and want to also just concur. We do appreciate hearing both what's going right and room for improvement, for sure, and this continues to still be, you know, a setting we're all getting used to, still working to get used to, but it can still certainly be challenging. And also just want to appreciate, want to express my appreciation rather for kind of adding to the discussion on this Wednesday schedule. We've been hearing a lot about that, and it continues to be a piece that, you know, we're, we have staff looking into and other items, but pretty consistent with some items that we heard two weeks ago as well. So appreciate you adding your voice to that conversation. It's very valuable input, and thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate it. And thank you both for being here. You're certainly welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but know that you probably have a lot of schoolwork and other items to get to. So feel free to stick around or depart at this time, but thank you both very much for your time. And with that, we are now at Item C2, Staff Reports. We have a report from Mr. Jim Schumake, Assistant Superintendent of Schools and Labor Relations.
Yes, good evening, President Viescas, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. We've had several opportunities to share our distance learning work that our site leaders and teaching staff have engaged in recently. Tonight, I wanted to share some examples of the work our CSEA and Teamsters staff have been involved in the past five weeks. I literally could share dozens and dozens of stories, but wanted to highlight four specific emails that are reflective of the amazing work being provided to our sites and our students by our Teamsters and our classified staff. From one site, they reported a Teamsters employee, John, is a rock star. He sits at the front office desk, answers the phone, and serves as the first point of contact for visiting families. He shatters the stereotype of the rough, rough Teamsters. He's friendly, he's kind, and he goes to all lengths to problem-solve for our families and students. Huge value added. Thank you. From another site reports, many of our CSEA members are volunteering to do homework, help Zooms for our kids. They are holding these every day from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. What a wonderful resource for our students. Yet another site reports that our two Teamsters members that are assigned to our site are a big help. Last week, they spent the entire day cleaning out our overgrown student garden. The area is usually maintained by our gardening club, but of course, without students for the last six months, it was in dire need of help. Our two guys worked all day in the heat, cleaning weeds, turning over soil, fixing irrigation, and hauling away waste. Our normal custodial crew wouldn't usually be able to spend time on this area of the campus, but now it's ready and waiting for the next group of students from our gardening club. And then lastly, our campus moderator and front office staff have gone above and beyond supporting our site and students. They call families daily to check in, ask how the site can help, and to connect kids that who are resisting engaging in distance learning. When kids miss a class, they call to check in on them. They have even volunteered to deliver Chromebooks to homes and assist with technology issues. They have been total team players. Again, I could cite many, many more examples of how our classified and Teamster staff have met this pandemic and distance learning head-on and with grace and with enthusiasm. Wanted to thank you tonight for letting me share at least a few of the notes I've received.
The ask is, if I can kind of build off of what Jim said as well, you know, when I've gone out to sites, you know, and just had conversations with staff, classified staff in the offices or throughout the campus, I've been so impressed with the work they're doing really to support what's going on at the schools for our students and our community, and they really have reinforced as well kind of this partnership that has been formed between Teamsters and CSEA and the other bargaining groups on our campuses, which is really unique during this time. And so, again, I want to say thanks as well to both of those bargaining groups. That doesn't happen everywhere all the time, and it really shows that group rising to this unique challenge and occasion that we're faced with.
Thank you both. Are there any questions from my colleagues at this time? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Schumake. We are now at Item C3, Board Appointed District Committees. We have two reports this evening. We will begin with Jennifer Morgan, Chair of the Curriculum and Standards Committee. Ms. Morgan, please begin when you are ready.
Thank you, Ms. Velazquez. Good evening, President Viescas, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kern, Ms. Cunningham. The Curriculums and Standards Committee met virtually last week to hold our first meeting of the season, and we were thrilled to have a full group of board appointees and 100% participation this past Wednesday. Given the emergency hold on the strategic plan and the traditional LCAP, we heard the presentation on the revised slash emergency slash temporary LCAP for the 2021 season from Lisa Borrego and Christian Schnapp. I believe you guys enjoyed the same presentation in a past board meeting recently. Our committee found the information in Lisa's presentation to be encouraging, and we look forward to continuing to learn about progress as we trudge ahead into the unknown. With the majority of our committee consisting of parents of students in various grades and schools, the members shared their feedback on the presentation being in line with their personal experiences with their own school sites. Mr. Kern and Jim had just kind of spoken to this as well. We all acknowledge that the situation is not perfect, but have been impressed by the hard work and dedication from each school, from the repurposing of classified staff to the extra efforts from site administration to spend more of their time reaching out in support of families and less of their time enforcing discipline. Our committee members were very hopeful that these new practices might find permanent places in our long-term solutions. So of particular note, we found the volume of Chromebooks distributed last spring and then also then this fall to be illuminating when we discuss as a group whether or not curriculum and content is truly accessible. The digital divide has always been a bit of a question mark. So learning then that we distributed over 20,000 Chromebooks and then hearing again that we've, this year's count is over 26,000, this is valuable information to consider for the future. So perhaps supplying a laptop to every student might be a practice that we just consider as a regular thing moving ahead, regardless if there's an emergency or another apocalypse. On another technology note, it was good to hear that we have touchscreen tablets on order for the littles. However, committee members did stress the value of making sure that as we hand these technology tools over to these families, that we're also educating perhaps these younger parents or newer families on the importance of limiting screen time at these crucial developmental stages, especially for TK and K. Guiding families to understand that these tablets should be used as a tool and not as a crutch will be imperative. Hooray for the digital citizenship that the district's already been working on. So that's kind of great that we already have a head start on that. The district's partnership with Care Solis to provide mental health and social-emotional support for staff, students, and families at no cost was applauded by our committee members. We're all eager for this resource to be shared with all of the families as soon as possible, and just rolling that out. We think that that's great, that that help is available. And then lastly, what stood out with us was how frequently Ms. Borrego referenced asking the community for feedback, receiving it, and then amending practices pretty much in real time in an effort to improve the distance learning experience for as many humans in our community as possible. We made a point to thank Lisa on how responsive the FACE team's work has been, and we genuinely appreciate how community feedback is integral in the just continual improvement and planning with this, how quickly the district has been able to identify solutions based on the feedback, and then implement changes and reforms, you know, while stumbling as we go. It's still been remarkable that the stuff's happening quickly in response to the feedback that's being received. So that in itself, from just being a person in the community, was much appreciated. And then also, just because we had Lisa Borrego's ear, we had asked, out of curiosity, with the parent workshops that the FACE department is holding, if in these times with the virtual Zoom meetings, if they're finding an increase in participation, and that was something that Lisa was able to confirm, that even in fact, that night, they had a strictly Spanish-speaking parent workshop, and I think they had over, like, 45 people were already signed up and ready to be in that evening's meeting. So again, this whole entire situation is not ideal, and it's not perfect. However, in looking ahead in depth, much farther down the road, and in the bigger picture, we're hoping that some of these good things that are coming out are little gems that we can keep in the long term, even when we do resume in person again. So a little silver lining in this chaos. Aside from that, I think a lot of the sentiments were echoed. You know, everything's not perfect, but for the most part, we're seeing some positives as we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your report, Ms. Morgan. Next, we will hear from Heather Gonzalez, Vice Chair of the LCAP PAC. Ms. Gonzalez, please begin when you are ready.
Hey, everyone. Good evening, President Viescas, Members of the Board, Ms. Cunningham, Superintendent Kern. I'm Heather Gonzalez, and I have the honor to serve as co-chair for our district's Local Patrol Accountability Plan, Parent and Community Advisory Committee, and I'm just here to give a brief update around the LCAP PAC efforts thus far, up to date. As you can imagine, I will continue the sentiment around, you know, of course, the COVID-19 crisis has vastly changed our LCAP PAC priorities and process as everything else, and so we're just really proud to affirm that our LCAP PAC is comprised of dedicated students and parents, as well as community representatives who are eager to find the solutions to support continued San Juan Unified School District student and family success, and we're especially determined to rise to that occasion during this difficult and uncertain time. And so those are the beautiful things that are not necessarily captured and dated, but important to lift because we have folks who are willing to do the work and to make it happen. On August the 13th, the LCAP PAC held a voluntary meeting, and we provided an overview of the learning plan. Participants of the PAC were introduced to the plan, given the overview of the process that the district would be taking to solicit community feedback, student voice for consideration of that process. So then on August the 27th, we held our first official PAC meeting. And this meeting, we had an in-depth learning plan review. The PAC had a lot of really critical conversations, asked a lot of questions, gave a lot of feedback, shared personal experiences, and gave some considerations for the process. At this meeting, we were also able to generate questions specifically for Superintendent Kern, and he responded to them directly as well. On September the 10th, we had our next PAC meeting where we reviewed those responses from Superintendent Kern in depth, and our PAC was provided additional opportunities to, you know, come together, create community, have discussion, and give additional feedback to some of those points, or ask even more in-depth clarifying questions as, you know, where no one has all the answers, so those are going to continue to rise up. At the beginning of the school year, the PAC did have five vacancies that have since been filled, and our new members have joined, and we're happy to see that they're actively participating and contributing to the essential conversations in this really important time for this process. And despite the many unknowns in this time, our PAC remains centered in our love for our students, and we're laser-focused on contributing all that we can for the student and family success. We're finding ways to build LCAP PAC community cohesion while physically distancing, and so that's been fun to kind of play with, ways to stay centered in our value of community and continuing to foster that culture as we take on these important measures. We do want to be intentional to acknowledge the participation from our board liaisons, Mike McKibben and Zima Creason. We really appreciate your presence and voice. And we want to additionally acknowledge and give special thanks to Lisa Borrego, as well as Laura Mulder. We really see them as steering this boat on these, like, bumpy waters in the dark of night, not to be dramatic. But it really feels like that sometime, and so their leadership is felt, and, you know, the support is never-ending, a lot of considerations, open-ended questions to help us kind of navigate through this difficult time. And so that concludes my LCAP PAC update for the evening, and I just want to thank you all so much. And I also piggyback on the sentiments that have been shared, you know, in times like these, like, you know, there's not enough preparation in the world, and there's not a right answer, and we could do our best with what's presented, and, you know, you all have been taking on a lot, and we just really appreciate your leadership and your responsiveness and continued work. And so I send my personal encouragement to you all. It's not easy, and this is when leadership is really defined, and so thank you all for your efforts and contributions to our student success. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gonzalez, for the report. At this time, I'm going to see if my colleagues have any questions of either you or Ms. Morgan. Seeing none, thank you both very much. We really appreciate... Oh, Ms. Creason?
I was going to pull it back. So I do, I have more statements than questions. First, I want to say thank you to both our chairs, Chair and Co-Chair, for, you know, just all the time. I know it takes a lot of time and effort and work, and I know you're dealing with your own stuff in the middle of... I know it takes a lot of time and effort and work, and I know you're dealing with your own stuff in the middle of a pandemic. And I just want to express gratitude for all you do and showing up the way you do. I really, really appreciate it and providing leadership in your space to us. I did want to call out, you said a lot of things, Jennifer, that I was like, yes. But the digital divide piece, I would love to, you know, maybe engage in some thought partnership. I know I've bugged the superintendent about this too. It's like, okay, we've closed the digital divide. What do we do? And COVID's done. We're going to open it back up. You know, what do we do? There are some tricks, there's some sticky things because of laws and public funds and gifts of. And there's some weird stuff, but I think with some creativity, you know, maybe there's something we could figure out. And maybe, you know, there's some private-public partnerships that could happen. I don't pretend and presume to know the answer. I know it's complicated, but it's important to me too. A lot of things that you said were important to me too. And just maybe we could get together offline and talk that out. I share that concern. Yeah. Yeah. And then Heather, I know that this, I want to acknowledge this too. Not just of you, but the whole LCAP PAC, you signed up for a very different job than the job that you're being asked to do now. I really just want to acknowledge that and again, express gratitude for hanging on in there, even though, you know, your job description completely changed. So thank you.
No, all good. We're here for the long run. So honestly, I see probably even more participation from the PAC in this difficult time. And so I think it just really speaks to the commitment that our group has to our students in the district. So.
Agreed. Thanks, Bren.
Thank you both very much. We are at items C4 and C5. Mr. Allen, do we have any reports from employee organizations or other district organizations?
I do not have any requests for those items.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. Next, we are at item D, visitor comments. Mr. Allen, will you please give instructions to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have comments at this time?
Certainly, President Viescas. This item is for general public comment. If you'd like to offer a comment for an item that is on tonight's agenda, we would ask that you hold your comment until public comment is called for that item. If you'd like to offer a comment regarding a topic that is not on tonight's agenda, now would be the appropriate time to do so. If you'd like to offer a comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, you may do so by submitting your comment via the web form found at www.sanjuan.edu/BoardMeeting. Or if you've joined us tonight on Zoom, you can also offer a verbal comment by raising your hand. To do so, click the Raise Hand button located at the bottom of your screen if you're on a mobile device. The Raise Hand button can be found at the bottom of the participants list if you're on a desktop Zoom client. Or if you've dialed into tonight's meeting, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. And I do see that we have general visitor comments. So we'll go ahead and start with those who have indicated they would like to speak using the Zoom platform. I would like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes. Under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So we are not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent can and will refer items to staff who can follow up with you. We will begin on our Zoom platform. We'll start with Mr. Tom Nelson, followed by Scott Rafferty. Mr. Nelson, please begin your two minutes when you are ready.
Staff illegally deprived an individual of his rights at an official meeting governed by California laws. Rights protecting freedom of speech at public meetings were violated. Staff took actions against the chairperson of your parent advisory committee. Those actions violated bylaws which were established by you, this school board. Staff was instructed to take actions which denied freedom of speech to the public. There are three points where staff violated parents' legal rights, itemized in increasing seriousness. One, the chairperson of our committee is elected by members of our committee. Staff undermined the will of parents and community in removing our elected chairperson. This action is contrary to intent of the law establishing an LCAP committee. Our committee's function is to provide to the governing board of this school district. Our committee is your committee. Two, members of your committee are appointed by our school board. Staff violated the expressed will of our school board when it removed a member. That member was denied due process before being removed. Three, the third violation involves freedom of speech. Staff attempted to deny freedom of speech at a public meeting during public comment. These are actions of intimidation by administrators. I ask that President Viescas direct the superintendent to cease and desist in interfering with your committee. Staff is inhibiting your parent advisory committee in advising you. It is purposefully shutting down a public protection established in law. The parent advisory committee is part of a system of checks and balances. State law established our committee to hold our administration accountable for their actions. Your committee cannot perform its purpose if the school board allows this interference by administrators and committee proceedings. Thank you. I'm Tom Nelson, duly-elected chairperson of our parent advisory committee to advise you, the school board, on matters of accountability and financial oversight. I yield the floor to our board president. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Next up, we have Scott Rafferty, followed by Zachary Yonker. Mr. Rafferty, please begin your two minutes when you are ready. Mr. Rafferty, you might be on mute. We can't currently hear you. Mr. Rafferty?
Good evening.
Good evening. We can hear you.
I'm going to make two requests tonight. Your website still says that you are going to elect from single trusty areas this November. Some of your voters may be confused when they get ballots that allow you to vote, allow them to vote for all three of you who are running. Now, I'd like you to fix that. Each of you said you really wanted to move to trusty elections in 2022. I thought that it would be easy to resolve this matter efficiently once you got the delay that you wanted. But unfortunately, it seems I was wrong. Now, you also post the letter that you sent to the governor to suspend the California voting rights act. Now, that means that 400,000 voters across the state will be able to cast ballots this November, but their votes will be diluted. Their ballots will not be effective. And it includes a lot of places that are where that reform is more necessary than here. Like a city where white men elected 30 years ago still govern a city that isn't majority white anymore. Now, as a so-called demanding attorney that you claim to have reached out to and requested a two-year delay, I would ask you to post the entire correspondence. Ask the emergency or attorneys wrote me, they're absolutely going forward. Then I got an odd call where they said, we're absolutely going forward, but we want to talk about delay. Four times I returned that call, never returned to me. I transcribed the message and said, what's going on? I'm told we're absolutely going forward. Now, more important than having misled the governor about what I said, which was the opposite of what you told him, I would ask you to highlight and correct this statement. Register of voters' offices across the state have indicated they will need more than the 125 days lead time to adjust all maps required for the election. Now, this state was very critical for you to get everything that you wanted, but it's not there to our state's 56 registrars. They're working hard and doing an incredible job.
Mr. Rafferty, then it's time, and we would ask that you conclude your comments, sir.
I say just don't mislead the governor about how hard they are working, and none of them has ever threatened not to implement a map delivered on time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty. Next up, we have Zachary Yonker, followed by Serena Henman. Zachary, please begin when you are ready.
It will be one moment for Mr. Yonker. We do need to promote him to a panelist for a Zoom conflict issue.
Okay. Hello, board members. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
All right. So I'm a parent to a first grader, and I'm submitting public comment to kind of humbly beg you to pursue the waivers as hard as you can. And the reason why is because I was doing some research, and it appears that there's 25 or more schools in Sacramento that are reopening now with waivers. Most of those are private schools. I looked up the tuition for those private schools, and they seem to be, for a lot of Catholic schools, they're around 500 per month, ranging up to 1,000 per month if you're not a parishioner of that organization. And so to me, that's pay-to-play education. We have kids who are returning to school now on their parents' dime and being afforded a higher-quality educational environment. And we're increasing the wealth gap, the strong advantages that those wealthy parents and kids can gain through education over kids who are in public school now. And I know you don't have any control over them, but what you do have control over is our school district. And I want you to know that every day that we go not being opened is another day that other kids who are wealthier, whose parents can afford that schooling, are attending schools. So I want to ask, I was reading on your website that it's not a priority at this time, and I can't tell you how disheartened I was. I work for Sacramento County CPS, and my wife also works for Sacramento County CPS. Our absence from that work has been nothing but crippling to the county. They are struggling. They were understaffed to begin with, and they're underwater now. I am absolutely begging you, begging you, begging you. And if nothing else, let this be an advertisement to every other parent listening right now. For $500 a month, your kid can attend private school in person. If you can afford it, I would 100% recommend that. I'm worried that the district is going to be losing funding because kids are going to be poached by those private schools in the area. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Yonker. Next up, we have Serena Henman, followed by Juan Igas. Serena, please begin when you are ready.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, I haven't been on the whole meeting, but was it addressed about the San Juan public Instagram page? Was this content brought up at all?
I'll invite you to expand more. We don't typically do Q and A during. I'm not going to respond to that, but please take the balance of your two minutes.
Okay. I was just, I just had a concern because I was a, I've gotten a lot of comments about the San Juan Unified Instagram page publicly posting pictures of our kids with their full names and the school they go to. I don't know about other parents, but for me personally, like, I don't think that's okay. And I know a lot of other parents who just recently found out about this as well, and they're not happy about it either. So my question, which is not a question at Q and A, but maybe I could get some feedback later, was if these parents know about this, if they allowed this, just because there's a lot of wrong people in the world, sex traffickers, pedophiles. So that's why I'm bringing that up, because I know of a lot of parents who are not okay with that. And if it was my child personally, I'd be freaking out. That's all.
Thank you very much, Serena. Next, we have Juan Igas, followed by Marina Gable. Mr. Igas, you're on mute.
I'm sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. No problem.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm coming to you as a former chair of the LCAP Parent Advisory Committee and former chair of the Facilities Transportation Finance Committee. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about what Tom Nelson spoke to you. But I just, in a brief moment, just want to say I support 100% the message given to you by Scott Rafferty. Regarding Tom, I wanted to convey my concern and dismay regarding his suspension from the LCAP PAC committee. He was informed by staff that he was suspended as chair due to vague concerns regarding social media. Staff claims that his suspension was not instigated by board members, yet per state and PAC bylaws, the board, not staff, has jurisdiction over PAC membership. If the suspension was instigated by the board, their decision was not discussed in a public meeting or pre-announced closed session meeting, thus raising serious Brown Act concerns. At the September PAC meeting, Tom was denied participation as both the chair and as a member. His freedom of speech was severely curtailed. I register my concerns to highlight the shameful and unprofessional treatment Tom has experienced. His case is despised of how San Juan treats dissenters and those questions, policies, and actions. It also sheds light on dysfunctional district oversight of the PAC. Since inception 2014, three of the four chairs have been unethically removed. An assistant chair has resigned in protest. Further, two of the three staff liaisons have abruptly resigned or prematurely retired after demotion. This is no way to run an advisory committee. Silencing parent and community voice required by law is no way to behave in a democracy. Please provide Tom respect and due process worthy of any citizen, especially one who has given selflessness of his time and commitment to the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Igas. Next up, we have Marina Gable, followed by user named Joyous PC. Marina, please begin when you are ready.
Hello. Hello, board. I'm probably going to go over. I'm just going to start. I'm a concerned parent over my son's student assignments, and I'm placing a complaint about an educator's misconduct. I'm not sure, am I allowed to tell you the names and the school? Hello?
During public comment, you're free to discuss what you would like. We can also direct you to the appropriate staff member to take on something more formally, and we likely will regardless. But during public comment, the floor is yours.
Okay. The teacher's name is Lisa Dill Torre, and she's at the Twin Lakes Elementary. She uses a program called Kahootit, and it's part of her social justice curriculum. She designed a video game, which is a form of true or false. It is designed to be played repeatedly, so each player can get a higher score. Using a form of a video game is such a seductive way to get a child to memorize vocabulary, even if they do not understand what they're being exposed to. That is what she called it, a vocabulary test. The imagery from the 1940s ads and adult humor comic strips, which were used in this strange form of negative reverse psychology. What a lazy and perverse way to expose our children to her own personal views on gender stereotyping. This test was even confusing for many adults that I have forwarded the test to. Many parents have not seen what their children are being exposed to. These tests are only up for a certain amount of time and then are no longer available. The imagery is so negative, it is all a child is going to remember and not really understand the content in which this teacher is attempting to call educational. It is a disgrace, and it is disheartening that this is what is happening to our educational system. I am so glad teachers are exposed for the first time in history that they are under a microscope. I am taking the pandemic as a positive to really have a view into what my son is being exposed to. I have a lot more to say, and I've already spoken to the equitable department, the teacher, and the principal, and I'm not done. I'm an advocate. I'm a mandated reporter. I'm a school bus driver for special needs students.
Ms. Gable, we do need you to conclude your comments, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gable. Next, we have username by Joyous PC, followed by Nikki Martesyan. And I invite you, Nikki, to correct me. I apologize. Joyous PC, please begin when you are ready. You're currently on mute. Joyous PC, we can't hear you at the moment. Okay, I think we might be having some technical difficulties. We're going to go to Nikki Martesyan, and then we'll try and go back to Joyous PC. Nikki, please begin when you are ready, and please let me know how to pronounce your name. I apologize.
It's Martesyan, but you were close.
I tried.
I just want to speak to the fact that I know that you guys have had a lot of negative comments around the distance learning. And I might be in the minority here, but I would really like to thank the board and the superintendent and everyone else involved in keeping our children and our T- and everyone else involved in keeping our children and our teachers' safety as the top priority in this situation that we're currently in. Our family truly appreciates it and truly appreciates the options that you're giving our students to learn from home and stay safe. I've also, I've heard it stated several times that San Juan is committed to having a, um, full-time distance learning option available for students through, uh, through the duration of the school year, even if, uh, schools get waivers or, or open up in a hybrid model or do, do some sort of combination thereof. And would love to have someone, uh, if anyone has any details on what that looks like yet, follow up with me. Uh, we have a high-risk child at home and we're helping take care of my husband's parents, and we definitely would want to continue our distance learning option for our kindergartner that's at home for the duration of the year. So, uh, thank you again. We really appreciate, uh, what you're doing, and we know it's really hard to go against popular opinion. But we appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martasian. Next up, we have Joyous PC. Joyous PC, please begin when you are ready. Joyous PC, Zoom indicates that you're currently on mute. Oh.
Joyous PC, at the bottom of your screen, there's a microphone icon likely that will say mute or unmute if you are looking for a way to unmute yourself. And you should also have a pop-up inviting you to unmute yourself.
Okay, I think we're having some technical difficulties. I'll just take this opportunity to remind everyone that we do have, um, many ways to offer public comment. That includes both offering, uh, via, uh, online, via the website at www.sanjuan.edu/BoardMeeting. And I'll also take this opportunity to remind our participants that we do have one more, one more spot for visitor comments towards the end of the meeting, as we do at every meeting. Item J is another opportunity for visitor comments. So I, at the moment, I don't see any other individuals wishing to provide public comment.
President Viasquez.
Mr. Allen, have we since received any via email?
I do have two written comments, uh, for this item.
Okay. Please begin when you're ready.
Our first item is from Amy Kasuni. Ms. Kasuni writes, "I am so disappointed tonight. As this board knows, I serve this governing body as the first local control accountability plan, parent advisory committee chair for the district. A state mandated committee tasked with advising on budget accountability and closing the achievement gap for underserved students. In short, the committee provides important parent voice mandated by state law. I had such high hopes in beginning my work for you all and what we could accomplish together. Yet the work of our committee was ignored and thwarted. The pattern of this board's conduct speaks for itself. It has now forcibly removed three of the last four LCAP PAC members who have served as committee chairs undermining parent voice and interfering with the duty and efficiency of the committee. In addition, two of the three district staff liaisons to the committee have abruptly resigned or prematurely retired after a demotion. Tonight is simply about what the board values. Does the board value parent voice? Does it value improved academic outcomes for low-income, minority, English learner and foster youth students? If the answer to either of these questions is yes, Tom Nelson should be reinstated to his position as chair and member of the LCAP Parent Advisory Committee. His suspension is both unethical and a violation of norms and best practices. It's time to stop abusing parent volunteers and get down to the important work of improving student outcomes." Our next comment is from Carol York, who writes, "Thank you for putting children first. You are all amazing. I am proud to be a member of the San Juan Unified School District." And that concludes our submitted comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. I'm just going to do one quick check to see if we have any other raised hands at the moment, and we, um, we do not. Um, I do want to just try one more time to give username Joyous PC an opportunity. Okay, that
Hey, third time's a charm.
Oh, okay, great. Please begin your two minutes when you're ready.
Thank you. I'll make sure I have my glasses on the next time I do this. So my name is Joy Wake. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to talk to you this evening, and I appreciate all of the work that you are doing for our students. I am the former, um, co-founder of the San Juan Education Foundation. I am the founder of the High School Parent Engagement Group. And I am a former member of the Facilities and Transportation and Finance Committee. I am very interested in what is going on at our school district. I am here today to ask that you reinstate Tom Nelson to the LCAP Committee Chair. We all know Tom is of the highest integrity. We all know that he has devoted more than a decade to making our school district better. Board Member Hernandez, I believe you appointed him many years ago to the Curriculum and Standards Committee, and you should be proud of that appointment. You all know Tom. We know that sometimes his dogged pursuit of transparency, of balance, and of the nitty-gritty details, all in the name of helping our most vulnerable children. And sometimes he really keeps us on our feet and he challenges us because he really cares about our district being better. Anybody who has worked with Tom Nelson will vouch for his character, and I am just one of those many. And we want him back at work on the LCAP Committee immediately. There is a lot of work to be done. As you know, as you heard tonight, we should be focusing on distance learning, equity, problems with, uh, universal digital access. We shouldn't be focused on anything like this. Our district needs Tom Nelson back as the chair of the LCAP Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Joy. Do one more check of our attendee list. And at this time, I see no other hands raised. So with that, we are at item E, the consent calendar. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments for items that are on the consent calendar?
We have not received any written comments for items on the consent calendar. If you are with us on the Zoom meeting tonight and would like to offer a comment on an item that is on the consent calendar, now is the opportunity to do so. Again, you may do that by raising your hand, by clicking that raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or the bottom of the participants list, or if you've dialed into the Zoom call tonight, pressing star nine on your telephone keypad.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. I'm going to just take one slightly awkward pause to give folks an opportunity. And seeing none on our participant list, do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar at this time? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve items E1 through E9?
I move to approve items E1 through E9.
It's been moved by Dr. McKibben, seconded by Ms. Costa. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. We are, um, now at item G, our business items. We'll begin with item G1, the summary of professional learning opportunities. Ms. Schnapp, please begin when you are ready.
Good evening, President Viasquez, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. Tonight, we're here to talk about our summer learning and lesson design that occurred, um, this summer. With school closures occurring last spring, the need to provide professional development opportunities focused on distance learning was a top priority for our team. Tonight, we will share the innovative and collaborative learning experiences that were available to our practitioners. Our ongoing collaborative commitment has been to support practitioners through professional development opportunities, asynchronous lesson bank development, and instructional technology support. To start with, the Department of Equity had over 50 practitioners engage in a book study this summer. One book in particular, Hacking School Discipline, focused on building community and restorative practices. And a new addition was Onward, which focused on social emotional learning and resilience for adults, which was much needed at this time. And on August 5th, our Department of Equity also hosted a Social Justice in the Classroom Institute. This session was an opportunity to showcase the collaborative work our practitioners have engaged in with Sac State. Professors from Sac State were invited to highlight the key themes of the institute. And the teacher leaders who are, um, participated in the summer in, in the institute were invited to do breakout sessions and share some of the learning and the work that they engaged in during the institute with Sac State. In addition to the book studies with the Department of Equity, we also had, um, a wide variety of other book study offerings as well. Our ELD team offered a series of book studies focused on increasing academic discourse for our language learners. They had over 50 participants, and it was all grade levels, um, coming together to do this learning. And the book study lasted six weeks this summer and included both synchronous and asynchronous opportunities for teachers to meet through Zoom meetings, Google Classroom, and then other opportunities for reflective learning. We also had over 300 teachers participate in our book study on grading for equity. In this book study, teachers examined how grading practices can help students become leaders of their own learning. The book focused on three main pillars, and that was equitable grading practices that are accurate, bias-resistant grading, and then also grading that motivates students. Next slide.
Okay, actually.
I'd like to turn it over to Nicole Nadek. She is going to be talking about EdCamp. And I understand, Nicole, go ahead and turn it back one slide because you're going to talk about one more book that we were, we were going to share.
No problem.
The one additional book study that was available this summer was the book, Learning First, Technology Second. And with it really seeming like technology is both everything and everywhere, this book study is particularly timely in helping practitioners keep learning at the forefront during distance learning. One unique professional learning opportunity that we offered this summer was EdCamp. EdCamp was initiated with a couple of objectives in mind. The first was to provide an individualized learning experience to support high-quality distance learning to a large number of practitioners. And the second was to build that professional learning with and around the expertise of our own practitioners and other staff. This was a collaborative effort, bringing together facilitators who included classroom teachers as well as staff from counseling, the Face Department, Equity, SPG, and PLI. More than 100 teachers attended that day, and they attended an average of four sessions each, plus the opening keynote. We received a lot of really positive feedback. And just two examples of that feedback that are representative of the themes in the feedback include, "The structure for planning is foundational, and I thank you for getting us all on the same page with that. It will help our PLCs and our planning discussions." And also, "I appreciated the new ideas on connecting with students and families during distance learning." Practitioners who could not attend in July now have access to an asynchronous version of this professional learning opportunity, which is available to them in our online professional learning catalog. In August, the PLI math team, in partnership with lead practitioners and SCOWI math consultants, facilitated a three-day summer math institute to support the shift in math instruction with distance learning. During this three-day institute, 84 practitioners collaborated to develop norms for Zoom meetings, practice engagement strategies and formative assessment practices, and then turned their focus on how to facilitate all of that in a distance learning classroom. The content was based on the math framework to support teaching the essential standards identified earlier in the summer. Feedback from the institute was very positive, and 98% said they would like to continue collaboration with grade-level teachers around these practices. The PLI math team has been supporting teacher, practitioners these first weeks of school, and they are developing a plan to continue and expand the learning from the institute. Kristin, are you on mute?
Thank you. Yes, I was. This summer, we also offered professional learning for practitioners in System of Professional Growth. The first training was a refresher for practitioners who had previously participated in the SPG process. This training focused on the changes in SPG specifically due to distance learning. The second training was really geared for our new teachers that were new to San Juan Unified School District. And it was a comprehensive training that really reviewed the SPG process as well as our essential elements. And the third training that occurred was a special session that focused on Essential Element 2.3, which was focusing on classroom management and, um, how to create norms in a distance learning environment. Typically, Essential Element training is offered throughout the year, but due to the nuances of distance learning, the SPG team offered a special session that focused on helping teachers, and especially our new teachers, create those rituals and routines that will help them create, um, collaboration and a sense of community within their classrooms. This was really, um, something that our new teachers appreciated, and, uh, they are revisiting it as they start the school year. Next, we're going to have, um, our collaborative partner, Bill Simmons, who is our SJTA president, talk about some of the work we did around, um, the lesson bank development and, um, teacher support with that process.
As in previous presentations, we have shared the work around selected, selecting teachers to design virtual lessons in many content areas. These lessons for, are for practitioners to access when they are planning and preparing asynchronous lessons for distance learning, or when we may move into a hybrid model. Over 100 interested teachers submitted applications and sampled distance learning lessons. A diverse team of teachers and administrators from elementary, middle, and high schools came together virtually and reviewed the applications. They selected the 80 most qualified practitioners to develop these lessons.
Facilitating the development of our lesson bank was, you know, a lot of work with, with so many people involved. So there were actually three teams. In a nutshell, the, we had the first team, which was the lesson designers themselves. There was also a team of reviewers who provided feedback and support. And finally, there was a third team who were the coordinators. And these coordinators led the work of the reviewers and the designers. I will share more about the coordinators in a moment, but I would like to elaborate a bit on the work of our review teams. In order to support our lesson designers, we enlisted several additional practitioners who are teacher leaders and who are deeply involved in fostering high-leverage teaching practices system-wide through their work in SPG, CTS, and curricular-focused TOSA roles. These practitioners worked in teams based on their areas of expertise. And within their teams, they were assigned to receive draft lessons from our designers and then review those lessons using the distance learning rubric and provide initial feedback as well as ongoing support to the designers. This collaboration and support between our reviewers and our designers was critical to the designers as they revised their lessons to meet the target or distinguished ranges of the rubric in preparation for publication in the lesson bank. A thread you might have noticed that is running through everything we are sharing tonight is thoughtful, collaborative, and strategic preparation and support. So I would like to step back for a minute and talk about the preparation and support that was provided to our reviewers to prepare them to offer thoughtful feedback to the lesson designers. The elementary, middle, and high school teams of reviewers The elementary, middle, and high school teams of reviewers each had a team of coordinators supporting their work. The coordinators provided calibration training on the distance learning rubric, as well as multiple drop-in sessions for reviewers to come together to discuss questions and procedures or address other needs they had in their role throughout this process. As this lesson design work came to a close, many designers shared that they not only felt prepared and supported to succeed at the task that was put before them, but that as a result of the training and support and their design work, they felt well-equipped to engage in distance learning this fall. All of the lessons that they developed are available to all practitioners in the Distance Learning Hub. And there are two introductory videos in the hub also to help practitioners access and use those lessons. And now I'd like to introduce Amy Day. Amy is a 7th grade English and History teacher at Will Rogers Middle School. She is also one of our lesson designers, and she is going to share a bit about the lesson design process.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for letting me present tonight. Over the summer, I had the opportunity to develop the 7th grade history units to assist teachers during their teaching this year. I'm excited to share some of my thinking and planning that went into my lesson designs. First, all of my units and lessons began with a focus on the standards and the frameworks that are listed here in order to keep the activities focused on the key content for my grade level. My units meet the district's teacher-identified essential standards for history, while also integrating English Language Arts standards and Social Justice standards as well. Next slide, please. All of my lessons are also designed to develop our scholars' skills to think like a historian. Using the district-adopted curriculum as the base of all of my lessons, these units develop not only content knowledge, but also the three other domains or areas of focus in the history framework: inquiry skills, student literacy, and citizenship. This shift in history moves students away from just memorizing dates and facts to understanding why events in history are important and how history still applies to them today. Next slide, please. I want to share with you a sample lesson for my units and how I designed the lesson and activities that go with this unit. In this snapshot from a sample lesson, students first learned about the Magna Carta, which is the English charter that guaranteed basic rights. The content focus of England's system of government and key governing documents is the initial focus in this lesson. Then students get a chance to discover how this document applies to their lives today, which gives them the practical application of their historical knowledge. I want students to see that their lives are still impacted by historical events and documents such as the Magna Carta. And in this lesson, while focusing on key essential questions, students will conduct research on the United States Bill of Rights. Using sites that I had vetted for accuracy, relevancy, and ease of understanding for our 7th grade scholars, students will read about how the Bill of Rights is based on the Magna Carta, what the Bill of Rights is, and what rights the amendments protect. They will then create a project in which they identify which amendments in the Bill of Rights that they believe are the most vital to their lives today. Materials that I provided to the teacher include a teacher's slide deck, project guidelines, research sites, a variety of options for students to present their information, and a grading rubric for the teacher as well. Project options for students include using the Google Suite to create a slide deck, drawing, or essay, as well as options for sharing, including sharing during class-time discussions on Zoom or through virtual gallery walks using digital platforms like Flipgrid. Next slide, please. As a teacher, adapting curriculum to the needs of my individual students can sometimes feel too daunting of a task to take on. Because there is no one-size-fits-all scholar, I kept this in mind and tried to assist the classroom teacher by providing some readily available differentiation options for all of the work that I created, some of which is listed here. These options, from audio on every student's slide deck to sentence frames for written work, give students the ability to demonstrate what they know within the historical content without being hindered by language skills. Shown here are some examples of graphic organizers I created to supplement a few of my lessons. Vocabulary rating sorts, shown in the top corner, would be used to introduce new vocabulary terms to students at the start of a unit or a lesson. The graphic organizer below assists students with making cause-and-effect connections between events in history, which targets not only history content knowledge, but also English Language Arts standards. And lastly, Flipgrid is a presentation option that gives students the opportunity to create videos in which they can showcase not only their work, but also their listening and speaking skills. All of these tools shown here give teachers the flexibility to adapt their lessons to meet the needs of their unique learners. Once again, thank you, members of the board, for this opportunity to share my passion for teaching with you this evening. Now I'm going to turn it over to Cheryl Russo from Carmichael Elementary to share her thoughts and experiences with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. So a lot of the things that Amy said are going to be repetitive a little bit. So I'm going to speak a little bit on the history and the science lessons in the Distance Learning Hub. So as Amy said, they were aligned to the essential standards. The lessons for me as a teacher are easy to use, and for students are easy to follow along. They are asynchronous lessons, so the students can do them, so you can devote your Zoom time to ELA and math. The directions are very clearly explained. And I don't have to make a lot of changes to the curriculum. I don't have to, there's a few things I needed to plug in my own Flipgrid or Google Form, but I don't have to adapt it. It's good to go. And they are integrated with other subjects. So the history, so for 5th grade, I teach 5th grade at Carmichael Elementary. And we have a year-long question of who decides who gets to be an American? And so it ties in with the Social Justice standards. It's integrated with Language Arts, and I teach at a Title I school, and I have quite a few EL students. So the text is, as Amy said, is read to the students. They have that option. And there are little blue arrows for 5th grade that point to Angela Luna narrated everything in the 5th grade curriculum, and there's little blue arrows that the kids click on so they know what is clickable link and they know what's not. If there's no blue arrow, then they don't click on it. And the audio guides the students. Again, the text is read to the students. There's lots of primary source images for the students. And then it's very clear learning targets, the criteria, whether they met the learning target. And then they know when it's their turn to do something at the end. Now it's your turn. And they're given a variety of ways to show what they know. And one way that they can show what they know is with audio recording. So if they have a difficult time with the writing, then you can still see if they can, have they met the history standards, so they understand the history standards. And then there's checks for understanding and self-assessing at the end. And the other curriculum I want to talk about a little bit is the Science Curriculum. And so the district has purchased the Mystery Science, and a lot of teachers and students were familiar with Mystery Science before the adoption. Well, I know it's not adoption, but before the purchase of it. And the way Mystery Science starts off is it starts off as a phenomenon, a wondering. What do the students wonder? And for 5th grade right now, I'm teaching the Web of Life unit. And the wonderings are things kids see every day. They're not a wondering that isn't something they haven't seen before. So some examples of the phenomenon my students are studying are, why would a hawk move to New York City? Another one is, what do plants eat? Where do fallen leaves go? Do worms eat dirt? Why do we clean a fish tank but not a pond? So those are wonderings. So once the wondering, the phenomenon is introduced, and there is videos that are chunked. The Mystery Science isn't come chunked, so it's chunked in the Distance Learning Hub and the Lesson Banks. So students have natural stopping points and natural places to ask questions. And then there's observation forms or planning forms for the kids to plan investigations. Here are your materials. How can we use these materials to answer this question? And the students plan, and then they watch the video. If they can do the investigation at home, they're encouraged to do so. But if they don't have those materials, they can still watch the investigation take place, and then they record their observations. Some, then at the end, after they've done that, they have a Flipgrid, which Amy spoke about. The Flipgrid is, they're just videotaping themselves. And my 5th graders think that they're YouTubers, and they are so excited to share what they know. And they even at the end say, message me, tell me what you think of my video. But in the end, they're actually telling me what they know, and I also know what they don't know. I know what their misconceptions are and what other learning needs to take place. So that is my experience with the Science and History Lesson Banks in the Distance Learning Hub for 5th grade. Thank you.
Cheryl, we want to thank you for sharing your experience with using the lesson banks, and we want to thank Amy as well. Board, we are here to answer any questions that you might have regarding summer learning and the development of those lessons.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schnapp, and the entire team. Before I go, two questions for my colleagues. We're going to turn it to public comment. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item at this time?
I've not received any written public comment at this time. If you would like to offer a public comment and you've joined us on the Zoom meeting, now would be the time to do so by raising your hand. And again, you can do that by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or the bottom of the participant's list if you're on a desktop client. If you dialed into the Zoom meeting tonight, you can press star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand.
Okay, we do have one public comment on this item. Just as a reminder, public comments are limited to two minutes. And ask that any public comment be relevant to this agenda item. And just as a reminder to our participants, there is another opportunity for visitor comments at the end of the agenda. We have username D. Fitz, who has raised their hand. Please begin when you are ready. Your two minutes will commence.
Hi. I am wondering, one, what the cost was of having all these teachers do this over the summer? And two, I had great difficulty trying to get logged into the Zoom meeting, so I may have missed it. But are there lesson banks for high school teachers? We are having some issues with the high school level. So those are my two questions. That is it.
Thank you very much for your questions and for joining us. I will now turn it over to my colleagues, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. More of a statement, as I have spoken to teachers, this by far is the praise that they are telling us that the teaching banks have been such a valuable tool to them and a resource. And this is something obviously that we've learned from the spring. So thank you for that. And secondly, to Ms. Russo, by clarifying. With next, again, the items, you made it very clear, so thank you so very much, and we appreciate all your work.
You're welcome. Ms. Costa.
First, I wanted to start with some comments. I was so impressed with the diversity of training that from book studies to one-day conferences to three-day institutes really allowed teachers many opportunities for training this summer. I was particularly grateful that we actually videotaped the lessons so that people can go back who weren't hired at the time or who were busy and watch an institute now when it might be more relevant to something that they're working on. So really nice job with that. To our practitioners who developed the lesson banks, I think textbook publishers could learn from you. Very impressive lessons, the ones that I saw tonight and ones that I have seen through friends. It's really encouraging that we have lessons, elementary, middle, and high school and special education, so that there are opportunities for students and for teachers to have learning that is available through a bank. My question for Ms. Schnapp is, will we have a way to, one, know how many lessons have been used during the course of distance learning? And two, are we getting feedback from practitioners about the lessons as they use them? I know we had a review team, and I have the ultimate respect for the people that were on the review team. But will we also get feedback from students using the lessons and from teachers who are using the lessons?
Pam, I'm going to start with your first question. Nicole Nadek, actually, and Nicole Kukrow are digging into the data. And I think we have found a way where we can actually count when people log in and look at the lessons. So we wouldn't be able to quantify how many people have used the lessons, but we can at least get into the Google Lesson Bank and see how many people have accessed that information. And Nicole Nadek might be able to expand on that, if you want to jump in, Nicole.
That was pretty much it. The Google provides a way for us to look at data for any Google Doc slides file or sheets file that tells us who the viewers are. And also, or if it's a large number of viewers, it will just tell us the total viewers if the file is considered popular by Google.
And then to your second question, we, one of the surprising areas that we're discovering is that a lot of our high school teachers are really enjoying the lessons. And in fact, the health teachers were asking for lessons. And Paula, our science program specialist and health program specialist, was able to pull together teachers, and they created a lesson bank for the health teachers as well. So especially the history and social science teachers and the English Language Arts teachers are really appreciative of the lesson banks that are available.
That's wonderful. Another really positive for support for our staff, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Next up, we have Ms. Creason.
Thank you for the report. It was really helpful. I just got to say, that first slide with all the books for the Summer Book Club was, I applaud you. Those are some heavy-hitting titles, and that's not an easy thing for a big system such as ours to put out there. So I just want to say thank you for bravery. That's what it's going to take to move the needle on some of the challenges that we as a society and we, very specifically as a school district, have experienced. So that was awesome. Thank you. I also want to just acknowledge, and I've said this once, but I'm going to say it every time you give me the opportunity to say it, is mountains were moved by all of you to make all this happen, to go into a distance learning model that worked the best that it could for students. It takes years for these systems to be built, and we were able to do an incredible job. Well, you were able to do an incredible job in a really short amount of time, and I think that that goes unrecognized. And I want to just put it out there and recognize you every time I can, because it's huge. Mountains were absolutely moved to do what you've done, and I applaud you for that. And the last comment is really just piggybacking off of Ms. Costa's comment. I'm really curious to know what, how students are doing. You know, any chance we get, like, how are they doing with the, they may not even know that they're getting their lesson from a bank. So I get that. But, you know, how are they doing as things are different? I know in our home, Jam boards are used a whole lot. You know, Kayden is mentioning things that he didn't mention when we were in person, and he's sharing his experience, and he loves it. I love it because it's so colorful and cool. So I'm just curious, you know, how are kids doing? So I appreciate you, and thanks for the wonderful presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Creason. Next up, we have Dr. McKibben.
Thank you very much. This is very interesting. And for me, it does take me back to the days when we used to pilot things like Man, a Course of Study and so forth in my long past teaching days. I do have four questions that are a little bit different. One was asked partially by one of the other persons that asked questions. How do the lessons break down in terms of elementary, middle, and high school and by different kinds of disciplines? I'll ask that question and then move on to my others.
We have all core content areas for elementary, so we have math, science, English Language Arts. We have ELD lessons, science. Did I get them all, you guys?
Dual immersion.
And dual immersion for Thomas Edison. We also hired special ed teachers to help write lessons for our mild, moderate, and our moderate severe. So we have lessons available for our special ed students as well.
And how about high school?
We did have high, middle, and high school teachers participating. We, we did have high, middle and high school teachers participating in all the core disciplines. Science, math, English and history, social studies.
And world language.
And world language.
And you mentioned that these were primarily for asynchronous lessons and so forth. Do you know of any instances where they're being used as either piggybacking or, or any time in the synchronous times that lessons are being offered?
Cheryl or Amy, do you guys want to answer if you guys have experienced using some of the lessons within your synchronous time?
Yeah, I have been using them in my synchronous times as well. When we originally started writing the lessons, we started writing them at the beginning of July. And so we didn't know yet at that time if we were going to be going back to school, hybrid or full distance learning. So with that in mind, we developers made sure that we included different forms of accommodations or teaching options to the teachers such as, in one of the lessons that I wrote, I told teachers that there's an optional Socratic seminar that they could do if they were meeting in person. And if they were not meeting in person, other options would be using, for example, the Flipgrid sharing tool as well. For me, I am using the lessons that were developed for English and the ones that I developed for history in my classes with my students. We usually do the into or the, the introducing of the topic work together in our Zoom sessions. And then the learning sections, they do independently during their asynchronous time or with me one-on-one if they need extra assistance. That would be the student slide decks that have the audio and the sentence stems for them to get them started. And then we follow up at our next Zoom session. We review the material and then I give them a mini assessment or an exit ticket.
Okay, Amy, that actually leads to my last question. And that was, you said yourself, you make yourself available to the classroom teachers and that sort of thing. How do you do that since you're also doing synchronous lessons and, and, and other kinds of things? How has the system accommodated you to help other teachers with the lessons that you have developed? And, and Cheryl, you may want to jump in on that one, too.
For me, before the school year started, I ran as a session, a training session through Zoom where I had eight different teachers that taught seventh grade attend the sessions in which I walked them through the lessons that I had developed and gave them my rationale and my thinking behind the units and the lessons. That session was recorded and it is in the learning hub for other teachers to view as they need. I have had teachers that have emailed me or messaged me directly with either questions or comments and feedback regarding the lessons that I had developed for them.
Thank you very much.
I can also, I just want to say, when I'm in a bad mood, I watch Amy's session where she walked the teachers through. They are giggling. There, it's like she's a rock star and they are so excited about her lessons and it cracks me up every time I watch it.
Thank you all. And thanks to my colleagues for, for the questions. Most of what I had were, was wrapped up. But I do want to, wrapped up in questions that my other colleagues already asked. I do want to ask a question and really kind of invite a response to kind of, can you succinctly, and it's already to some extent been covered, but just succinctly kind of explain why this, why and how kind of this lesson design is different and what, what the, like, what the benefits are, particularly in this environment, but I think in any environment, I'm just, I'm just curious, like, it's just, it's such a departure from how we typically, you know, choose design lessons. And I'm not a practitioner. So I would just love to hear kind of a, the succinct summary on kind of why, why as practitioners, this really works for you and for your students, importantly.
Can I start? Because I just, one of the things that's really unique, one of the things that's really unique about these lessons. Number one, we truly were in collaboration with SJTA. Bill and I, this summer, really worked together with our teams daily, hourly. That's number one. And then number two, as we decided to, to build the lessons, we, the approach we took was to use social justice standards, essential elements with SPG, differentiation with our special education department, success criteria, rubrics. So within the modules of what Amy had to develop there, it's really unique, the amount and level of support our teachers get based on what we asked them to use within their lesson design. It's, it's pretty, it was monumental for those teachers to build those lessons.
And I was, I would just add that when we developed the rubric for the lesson plans, we took into consideration concerns that we had heard from the, from students and parents about the variety of things that were happening in the spring. And by creating a lesson plan template, it makes the lesson plans seem similar, even though they're very different in content so that it's easier for the students to work through lessons in different content areas because they're able to find the same elements in all of the lessons.
If I could add on one thing.
Absolutely, please.
Thank you. So one thing that I, so whenever we get an adoption, teachers will go, well, this is good, this is good. But it's missing this, it's missing that. When you have teachers that are actually creating, they are going through and putting in the why isn't that there? Why isn't, you know, what's missing is there? So for instance, in the history, when my students are asked to write an essay, they, it has, how do you write the first paragraph? And there's an example. And then it breaks it down into this, what's the component of the next paragraph? What should you include? So it breaks it down and has, there's examples. So it's all those pieces, like, they don't know how to do that yet. Then there's a lesson that teaches them how to do that. So all those pieces that I feel that sometimes are missing are there. And when, if we go back to hybrid, what, in person, I'm not going to abandon the lessons I've been teaching. If they're doing this year-long question, answering, what does it take to be, who gets decided to get, who gets to be an American? I'm not going to go, well, we're back and now we're not going to do that anymore. So to me, it just is something that I can carry on. The mystery science, I'll be doing those hands-on investigations that we didn't get to do in person. They'll be so excited. They'll go, I want to do that one. So to me, it's like, it's, it's really teachers filling in those gaps of what often is missing. So I think they did an amazing job and I'm really grateful that I don't have to do that work as a teacher. I wasn't part of the creation of the lessons, but I'm benefiting from it. So.
President Viaske is, if I can build off of it, actually, I want, it fits perfectly with what Cheryl just said. I think we, we somewhat stumbled upon something, I think, this summer that if we shouldn't abandon going forward. We had some amazing folks working this summer to really develop lessons to support our entire system. Our, our objective was really around having more consistency based on what we heard from both students and parents and, and staff as well. And I believe, just like Cheryl said, when a new adoption comes about or there's even other areas where when we look at our data, where it might show we're having gaps, we could bring people together, teachers together during the summer to focus on some of those areas where we've identified those weaknesses or where we could support staff. I think about new teachers and just so many challenges they're already facing and to be able to come in and have a bank like this or through SPG, when we're trying to support some of our practitioners, there are so many positive aspects of really what these folks did this summer. And, you know, I think it just highlights some of the, the real superstars. And, you know, Amy and Cheryl, I just want to personally thank you that you, you, first, Amy, you, you gave up your time this summer. And Cheryl, you have dug in and you've supported the work and really just how you spoke about it tonight. I think that was not an idea that I had to continue this in the future, but I think it just kind of sprung to me that we, we have to continue this work in order to identify those areas where we can get stronger in.
I want to invite Ms. Stade. Do you have anything to add? No pressure, but I wanted to make sure you have the opportunity.
Just, so I've been teaching middle school for over 10 years and how I would teach in the classroom is very hands-on and collaborative in group. And one of the struggles in the spring was how do we transition where I don't get the in-person interactions with my students? The whole creation of the lessons during the summer really helped me see how would I, as a teacher, truly use the curriculum that I was writing? And so I wanted to make sure that whatever I wrote would be something that I would feel proud of using in my own classes and that I really thought would benefit the students that I know we have here in the San Juan Unified School District. And I was part of the history adoption. So I went through the vetting process with the district for the selection of McGraw-Hill. And I do think it is a great textbook, but they don't know our students and they don't know where our students need extra assistance. And that was where us lesson developers really wanted to step in and make sure that we were tailoring the activities and the lessons to fit the needs of all of our students in our district. So to really own it and make it ours.
Thank you. And thank you to all the presenters as well. Um, with, with that, we are at item G2, the instructional materials adoption. Ms. Schnapp, please begin when you are ready or rather continue.
And I think as you guys, as Mr. Hernandez said, this is a great segue for us. So our current approved elementary science materials, the FOS kits are not accessible to our students for virtual learning. So under the Williams Act, all students must have access to core adopted materials. And so for this school year, we're asking that we use the online supplemental materials for mystery science in elementary in lieu of our FOS kit as the core science material for grades K through five. So tonight Superintendent Kern is recommending that the board approve the use of supplemental science materials and resources for this school year.
Thank you, Ms. Schnapp. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item?
We've not received any written public comment for this item. And if you are with us on the Zoom meeting and would like to offer a public comment on this item, now would be your, your opportunity to do so by raising your hand, which is of course is that raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen on a mobile phone, the bottom of the participant list on a desktop client or by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad if you've dialed into the meeting today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. Seeing none at this time. Do any board members have questions or comments? We'll begin with Mr. Hernandez. We will go to Ms. Costa.
I just want to thank Ms. Balcom and Ms. Schnapp for sending me the link so I could go online and do all of the coursework. And I have to tell you, um, my granddaughter and I did all the coursework actually and were fascinated with the videos, the photographs. I could have spent days and days on this material. It was really well done. So I don't know who found the materials, but hats off to you because this was a great save that we have a science program for elementary students during the distance learning period of time. So thank you so very much. It's really amazing.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Creason.
I absolutely, of course, support the implementation of the new curriculum. I do have a budget question. And I know it's come up in the past, questions about where budget information is shown and it's always on the cover page of each agenda item, what's the budget and fiscal impact on everything that we're talking about every single time. So just want to point that out for people watching. So I see, you know, it's part of the current budget, the science budget. So there shouldn't be an additional budget impact, it seems like. Is that correct? I have a second part. And then any chance, any of the COVID support money that our county and others are getting is helping with those kind of costs?
Yes, we are also looking at online materials for our high school teachers around the science materials as well. We were in the process of adopting materials for both elementary and then piloting for high school. So yeah, so we are using those funds to support.
Awesome. Thank you.
Dr. McKibben.
Thank you very much. This was very exciting and I wish I would have had the foresight to do what, what Board Member Costa did and ask you to send the link because I was trying to figure these things out because they were, they were looking like they were very exciting. And, and also it led me back to the notion of, of thinking about FOS science. Because during my parent volunteer days, I helped in fifth grade FOS science and so forth. And as I read what you said, I can see, how in the world could you do that in distance learning? And you people had figured that out very nicely. But so congratulations on this. This is, and, and I was excited by the kinds of inquiries and so forth that they were saying. And they were asking all these questions that would be nat, so natural to, to elementary students. Congratulations on this. And, and I hope you'll, you'll send it to me so that I can look at it and, and, and play like I was a teacher again.
Exactly. I can have Paula, I can have Paula do that.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for the, for bringing this item forward for consideration. I just, can you quickly review some of that you already did? But I just want to offer kind of a brief summary on how this is distinguished from our typical adoption process and that it is a temporary adoption. Do you mind expanding a little bit on that?
Yeah, so we were in the process, we had piloted and we had selected materials to purchase. And then with the school closures, that was put on hold. So Paula was able to, and Paula Balcom, are you on this with me? I just want to make sure. Okay, so please, please jump in with me, Paula. Paula was able to find this online resource. Many of our schools have used mystery science. And so Paula reached out to our practitioners to find out what are some of the online resources that were available? And Paula, if you want to expand on that.
Well, the reason that we looked at mystery science is because it was very accessible and many of our teachers have used it in the past couple of years as we have had FOS in place. But we are in the process of transitioning to fully being NGSS aligned. So it provides great, like Ms. Costa was pointing out, it does provide really engaging questions and inquiry-based opportunities for students. It's not a fully NGSS comprehensive, hands-on program like the one that we are looking to make it adoption for in the future. But it is an amazing transition for us to be able to have students still doing science in a distance learning setting. It's very accessible to both our teachers and all of our students. So I think it'll be a great transition for us as we look ahead to implementing full NGSS curriculum in the, in the future.
Great. Thank you. That context is super helpful and just wanted to make sure everyone was on the, on the same page. So appreciate, appreciate the context there for sure. Seeing no further questions or comments from my colleagues, this is an action item. Is there a motion to approve the use of supplemental science resources, mystery science for use during distance learning?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Costa and seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. We are now at item G3, sufficiency of textbook and instructional materials. Ms. Schnapp, please begin when you are ready.
Thank you. And Ed Code Section 60119 requires that we hold an annual public hearing and resolution regarding sufficient textbook and instructional materials. So public notice of this hearing was provided as outlined by Ed Code. And tonight, the superintendent is recommending that the board hold a public hearing to discuss and adopt Resolution Number 3009 stating that each pupil in each school in the district has sufficient textbook and materials for each subject.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schnapp. I declare the top of the sufficiency of book material, a public hearing. It is now open for public comment. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item at this time?
We've not received any written comments. And if you are with us on the Zoom call and would like to offer a comment, now would be your opportunity to do so. You may do that by raising your hand. That's the icon at the bottom of your screen on a mobile device, the bottom of the participants list on a desktop client. You may do that by raising your hand. That's the icon at the bottom of your screen on a mobile device, the bottom of the participants list on a desktop client, or star nine on your telephone keypad if you've dialed into the meeting tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. We do have one person indicating they would like to offer a public comment on this item at this time. Dee Fitz, please begin your two minutes when you are ready.
I disagree very strongly. I do not believe that any of our children have sufficient materials because everything is done virtually. Our kids need things to be done, you know, that are hands-on. You're talking about all this science stuff and you're calling it sufficient, but it's all online requiring additional screen time like everything else. I completely disagree that they do not have sufficient materials. I don't know about textbooks. My kid only got one. So I have no idea about that, but I would disagree unless you handed them out to everyone. So that is my public comment. I do not agree with passing this.
Thank you very much for your public comment. At this time, there being no further comments at this time, I will turn it over to actually, I will first declare the public hearing closed and I will now turn it to my board colleagues for questions or comments. Mr. Hernandez.
No comment. Thank you.
Ms. Costa.
No comment.
Ms. Creason.
Just that darn pandemics are really hard and so wish that things could have been like they were, but really appreciative of everything that folks are doing in this unprecedented time.
Dr. McKibben.
Yeah, just a curiosity. On, on page three, under the Williams required board adopted textbooks, the, the mystery science, for example, is not listed there because I assume because it wasn't adopted, but I was kind of wondering if the Williams people wanted to know what we were doing in terms of the use of to try to mitigate the issues related to distance learning and that we placed this in, into our course of study. Would, should, should it be on these lists or did I just miss it and so forth? Because it seemed like it would need to be written somewhere for the Williams folks to be able to recognize it.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. We've been working very closely with SCOE, and so I needed to have materials approved tonight before I could update the adopted list. So now that it was approved, I will be able to move forward with updating that to submit to SCOE. And SCOE has been really very helpful through this process, understanding how challenging this has been for our schools.
Thank you very much. That makes sense.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. Seeing no further questions or comments at this time, this is an action item. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3009 stating that each pupil in each school in the district has sufficient textbooks and instructional materials in each subject that are consistent with the content and the cycles of the curriculum framework adopted by the state board?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. McKibben.
Second.
There's a second. It's been seconded by Ms. Costa. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 That was unanimous. We are at item G4, Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. Ms. Schnapp.
On September 8th, San Juan Unified School District held a public hearing and shared its plan for reopening schools. Tonight Superintendent Kern is recommending that the board adopt the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schnapp. And just for everyone's awareness, this was an item for discussion, as Ms. Schnapp just indicated, that was discussed at length meeting. It requires a opportunity and this evening we'll be taking action. That being said, Mr. Allen, do we have any public comment on this item?
We've not received any written comment on this item. If you would like to offer a comment and have joined us on the Zoom meeting tonight, now is your opportunity to do so by clicking that raise hand button at the bottom of your screen on a mobile device, the bottom of the participants list, if you are on a desktop client, or by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad if you've dialed into tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We do have username Dee Fitz indicating they would like to offer a public comment. Please begin when you are ready.
I believe that our schools need to open. I'm not alone in that belief. I am really frustrated that this school board really doesn't care that you're doing nothing. You have not even attempted the waivers. You don't care about the waivers. You're not concerned about the kids' mental health. You're not concerned about how distance learning isn't working. I completely disagree with this. And I am so saddened that you are focused on things other than what's really best for our kids. And I cannot agree with our learning as it's laid out.
Thank you very much for your public comment. I'm going to just one, do one quick check to see if there are any further at this time. Seeing none. Do any board members have questions?
Yes, because you do have another hand raised.
Okay, sorry, I did too quick of a check. Thank you, Mr. Allen. We have Marina Gable. Please begin your two minutes when you are ready.
Hello, I just want to go ahead and agree with the last comment, Dee Fitz. I think it is mentally taxing on children. I had, I had to recently place my son in counseling due to what has happened with both his teacher and just the fact that he is not in contact with his friends. So I know this is something that's happening on an ongoing basis for children. And the fact that you have not considered the waiver is really disheartening. School, kids need to be back in school. That's what they're for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gable. We have Melissa Watts. Melissa, please begin your two minutes when you are ready.
It will be one moment while Ms. Watts is promoted to a panelist for a Zoom issue. One moment. Ms. Watts, you should be able to unmute now.
Yeah. Am I good to go?
You are.
You're good to go.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, yes, I just want to first applaud all of you. I really commend everything that you are trying to put forth to our students. However, everybody is assuming that every student is a visual or auditory learner and that everybody can learn online. So all of the platforms that, that are being presented don't fit every student. And it's, I, I just want to be that kind of like voice for all those students that really can't learn online. They need to be in school. They need to be in collaboration with their peers, group work, hands-on. I just, I just, there's no easy answer for anything, but the whole distance learning platform is, is just, it doesn't fit for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Watts. I'm going to do a quick pause to see if there's any further public comment on this item before we turn to board members. Okay, seeing none at this time. Do any board members have questions or comments? Mr. Allen, do you mind taking down the screen share? It's hard for me to see my colleagues. There we go. Okay. Nope, that's not, none necessary. Mr. Hernandez?
No comment. Thank you.
Ms. Costa.
No comment. Thank you.
Ms. Creason.
Comment and question to Superintendent Kern. Please remind me, did we send out the communication about where we're at with going back to school and waivers and all that? I don't remember if it's gone out yet.
We did. That went out Friday. And Trent, do you want to speak a little bit more to that, the specifics that were in there? There were a number of communications.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Trent, you want to hit that real quick?
Sure. There was our large update that went out Friday afternoon. It did touch on waiver process as well as small group cohorts for our special ed students and next steps, which is really looking at our survey for our families and assessing what their next desires would be as we look at an eventual return to in-person learning.
Thank you for that. I'll say that it's, it's challenging. And I, I've said it once and I said I'm a broken record, I know, on our Zoom meetings because a lot of the same topics come up. And I am ready to send my child back to school. It's better for him, that's for sure. He definitely is having incredible challenges too. I'm in this position for all the kids in our district and all the stakeholders in this district, that every decision that this board ma- makes directly impacts my child. And I just want to put that out there for what it's worth. That is incredibly personal. And not to say that I'm more, my experience is more personal than my colleagues. We all have our love for what we do, but I want to, I just want to make that very, very clear that every decision impacts my child and it's a big deal. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Dr. McKibben.
I just wanted to thank the LCAP PAC and all the other committees that looked at this plan and, and, and the input that we got from, from the public and from the board, the various advisory committee members. And, and wanted to comment, it certainly is a pleasure to read a 50-page document rather than a 300-page document and, and have it be as clear as you can and for submission. And kudos to everybody who worked on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. I don't have any questions or comments at this time. This is an action item. Is there a motion to adopt the district's learning continuity and attendance plan for 2020, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Creason and seconded by Dr. McKibben. All those in favor, please, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. We are at item G5, Choices Charter Learning, Choices Charter School Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. Ms. Flagler, please begin when you are ready. I believe you're with us.
Yes. Good evening, President Viasquez, members of the board, Superintendent Kern and Ms. Cunningham. The superintendent is recommending that the board adopt the Choices Charter School Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan that was presented in a public hearing at the September 8th board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flagler. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item?
We've not received any written public comment for this item. And if you are with us on the Zoom meeting tonight and would like to offer a comment, you may do so by pressing that raise hand button at the bottom of your screen on a mobile device, bottom of the participants list on a desktop client, or by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad if you've dialed into the meeting tonight.
I'll give folks one moment to indicate if they have a public comment. Okay, seeing none at this time. Do any board members have questions or comments on this item? And I do want to also note that we've got Mr. Tony Odo with us for, I'm going to offer him up for questions or comment. I don't think he'll mind. Mr. Hernandez.
No comment. Thank you.
Ms. Costa.
No comment.
Ms. Creason.
No comment.
Dr. McKibben. Okay, thank you all. And this is a reminder for everyone who's joined us this evening. This was also an item that was up for discussion at the last meeting. This is the next, the corollary step to that item, which is taking action. Is there a motion to adopt the Choices Charter School Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan for 2020, 2021?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Hernandez. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Costa. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. We are at item G6, CSBA Directors-at-Large Nominations. This is a discussion item followed by possible action, should there be a motion made? The CSB board, CSBA Board of Directors is comprised of directors from throughout the state, and there are five directors-at-large. The CSBA Directors-at-Large, Asian, Pacific Islander, and Hispanic are elected in event-numbered years. Do any board members wish to recommend the nomination of candidates to fill Directors-at-Large seats for Asian, Pacific Islander, and Hispanic on the CSBA Board of Directors? Seeing no head nodding in the affirmative. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comment on this item?
We've not received.
I was only going to call for a comment if there was a motion, but we can still invite public comment if you want.
And of course, if you're with us on the meeting and would like to offer a comment, that raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, bottom of the participants list, or star nine on your telephone keypad.
Okay, seeing none. There is no motion on this item, so no action will be taken. We are at item H, Board Reports. Are there any board reports at this time? Um, Mr. Hernandez.
I just want to report, I mentioned that the facilities committee was going to adopt the facility handbook. We didn't get it on time to the agenda, but that will be coming shortly and with some minor changes to the, to, to present to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa.
Jennifer Morgan talked about curriculum and standards, and I just want to echo, with such a positive meeting, parents were talking, parents and grandparents were talking about all of the support that they had had from school staff, classified, certificated, administrative, and how much they appreciated it. And it was so great to hear people who had had experiences that were so positive. The other thing that many of the curriculum standards members talked about is the need for the plan to be placed at a prominent place on the website so that every person in San Juan reads the plan. They said probably one of the best presentations and it was so clear. And they agree with Dr. McKibben that 50 pages was really preferable to the 300 of prior years. So it was a great meeting.
Ms. Creason.
No report tonight.
Dr. McKibben.
Just wanted to mention that President Viasquez and I signed the bonds for, what was it, $180 million? They didn't ask me to bring my checkbook, so that was, that was a good thing and so forth. So the process that we went through at the last board meeting has been carried out and our bonds are on the way. And thank you for, to the voters that voted for it.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. One share out for my colleagues. They got to participate in a conversation. I think most are familiar, but just in case, there is a county-led initiative to re-envision Western Arcade. And so it's a six-ish square block area where there's, you know, there's just conversations being had on kind of what the area between Howe and Fulton, and then I believe it's Northrop and Arden. What, you know, in the ideal world, what does that look like? Is it more walkable? Is it more usable, et cetera? We do have a couple of key schools in that area. And also, you know, I think it's just an area of interest to the boards. So I wanted to share out, looking forward to seeing where those conversations go. Also joining me was Barry Roth from Encina, and we all know that Barry Roth is the go-to for all things in that area of town, but can, I'm looking forward to those continued discussions. It really is a community effort and looking to continue to center the experiences of our, of our children and our students at the front of that. So more to come later, but wanted to show that out. looking to continue to center the experiences of our of our children and our students at the front of that. So more to come later, but wanted to show that out. We are at item I, Future Agenda Items. Do any board members wish to add a future agenda item at this time? Mr. Hernandez, Ms. Costa, Creason, Dr. McKibben. I do have a request if absent any objections from my colleagues, hoping to get a more formal update on our continuum continuum of learning that we adopted earlier this fall, just kind of for a status update, both for our awareness and for the community's awareness on where we where we currently are in that. Seeing no objections or hearing no concerns. Okay. Thank you. Um, we are now visitor comments. Mr. Allen, another visitor comment at this time.
We have not received any written visitor comments at this time. If you have joined us on the Zoom call, this is your final opportunity to offer a comment on an item that was not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to do so, please raise your hand by clicking that raise hand button at the bottom of your screen on a mobile device, the bottom of the panelist list if or participant list if you are on a desktop client or by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad if you have dialed into the Zoom meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, and we do have one member of the public wishing to comment, and I'll just offer a brief reminder that public comments are limited to two minutes. Dee Fitz, please begin your two minutes when you are ready.
Okay, I am going to hit this up one more time. I hope you can open your minds and open your ears and listen to what I'm saying. Distance learning needs to stop. I don't know what email you're talking about. I got some short little email that was maybe one or two paragraphs. It needs to stop. It is not healthy for our children. They need to be back in school. When we have teachers who have been excused from turning on their cameras during sessions, excuse me, but you're the teacher. It should be on. When you have kids who are allowed, excuse me, to not participate, it's not fair to the teachers, and it doesn't make for a positive classroom environment. Problems logging in, problems with teachers not sending out the Zoom link. So many problems, and it's just leading to depression and frustration. And I'm tired of it, as are hundreds of other parents. I'm sorry that the rest of them aren't speaking up. I'll see what I can do for the next board meeting and get a whole group. Maybe you'll listen if it's more than me. You need to be honest about how much money the district is saving and how that plays into your keeping kids out of school. From now on, I am requesting that the board meetings be in person. There is no reason for you to be hiding behind your Zoom lens. You should be in the boardroom. We're all adults. We can wear a mask. We can social distance. There is absolutely zero reason for you to continue to be speaking to us virtually. So that's all I have to say tonight. I sincerely hope that you start listening to the public.
Thank you for joining us this evening. I will take one quick look to see if we have further public comments, and we do. We've got Tom Nelson, followed by Marina Gable, and another friendly reminder that public comments are limited to two minutes. Tom Nelson, please begin when you are ready. Mr. Nelson, you're currently on mute.
Thank you.
There we go.
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you, President Viasquez, for mentioning the West Arden Arcade project. And just a note, the the boundaries of that project are between North Rip Avenue on the south, Cottage Way on the north, Howe Avenue on the west, and Watt Avenue on the east with a cutout where Arden Middle School is. So Arden Middle School, Greer, and Encina High School, and Howe Avenue Elementary are all schools that would be impacted by the Arden Arcade project. So thank you for mentioning that, and I'm also somewhat involved in that project. If people are interested in it, they are they are free to contact me. My email address is thomas.nelson.sjusd@gmail.com. And thank you again for mentioning that project. I hope the community gets involved because community voice is very important to facilitate this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson, and I stand corrected on the boundaries. I appreciate that clarification. Ms. Gable, you are up next. Please begin when you are ready.
Hello again. I want to say thank you to Dee Fitz, and I would like you to please take my email if you're listening. It's M G A B E L K O L O at gmail.com. I would like to be one of those parents. I'm very concerned for my son as well as many other children. I'm going to continue with my story from Twin Lakes Elementary and the teacher that I have had multiple problems with in my son's education. Lisa Del Torre, Lisa Del Torre. I'm going to continue the story. She showed a video of a well-known motivated speaker. Nicholas James Wuchich is an Australian-American Christian evangelist who was born with Terra Amalia Syndrome, a rare disorder characterized by the absence of arms and legs. She introduced the video as a speaker talking to high school students, which right there alarmed me. These are fifth graders. Within the first five seconds of the video, he explains at age eight, he wanted to commit suicide. She then stops the video saying, oh, that's the wrong one. Too late. It's already imprinted in a child's mind. With what is going on in the world right now, how more inappropriate can you be? March 10th, 2020, KHN.org news. The suicide rate for children's ages 10 through 14 almost tripled in a decade. There is more popular book was read out loud, the one and only Ivan. The Discussion of the Circus and Human Oddities of the Circus. Thank you for my time. I'll continue next time.
Thank you, Ms. Gable. I'm scanning our participants list to see if there's any further public comment. I'll give folks one moment. Are there any further seeing no further items at this time. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you for joining us tonight. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education is set for October 13th. It is likely to be held on the Zoom platform. Please visit us at sanjuan.edu/boardmeeting for further details and to log in. Thank you.